Just talk for a minute or less. So, actually, these are labeled for words, but they're actually on the machine, so it's fine.
Okay.
Anyway, so for those of you who do not know, my name is Megan Weiss-Roe. I am the new Director of Communications and Community Engagement for the City of Kingston. I come from the nonprofit world, where I worked at Family Woodstock for over 10 years, mostly on the EverHodge Community Center in Midtown Kingston. I have, obviously, a deep history in human services and community work. So, I'm now in this position, I've been here for about four weeks. I just first want to say that, obviously, I'm new to the city, to working for the city, even though I've lived here for a long time. And maybe this sounds very naive, but I am very honored to be doing this work. I'm very honored to be working for the city. I'm very honored to be working alongside of each of you. I consider this role to be very important and also really a big undertaking, but in a really positive way. I think that for a long time, there were people who had felt left out of the process of local government, and I'm really excited to help connect local residents, local businesses, to their governments both ways. And so, I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. Maybe I have little packets here, and this is very brief, and you certainly don't have to look at it right now, but I want to let you know about who I am and what I'm doing. And so, the first section is my job description. So, obviously, you see the front page, it basically just talks a little bit about communications, mostly, which, you know, everything from the press releases, you all are now on our press list. If you feel that you're getting too many emails, please let me know, but I figured that if we are informing the press about something, that all of you should be informed as well, also put the department heads on the press list as well, so that way they know when major things are happening within our community. I'm also doing other communications, working on reformatting our newsletter, so that way it is more usable. Right now, it's a great newsletter, but it's online only, and so, we really want to be able to respond to residents who do not have internet access. And so, there's a long list of different things that we're doing with communications, as well as the community engagement piece, including the continuation of the management of the EverHodge Community Center, including helping with the, making sure that we are meeting all of our reporting needs, and making sure that all of our partners have a place at the table to offer good quality after-school summer programming for our children at the Hodge Center. So, the first section, like I said, is my job description, I'd love for you to review. And the second section is the beginning of a draft communications plan, and so, I respect your request that you look at it as a draft, but I want to kind of show you, basically, this was basically a superficial analysis of where we are with our communications. I basically did a resource inventory of what we have at our disposal as far as communications. We have an active website, you know, we have a lot of infrastructure in place, but we also have a lot of gaps in our resources. Some of it is in policy, and so, if you look at our social media policy, it was passed in 2011, and social media itself has changed a lot since 2011. There are also other opportunities for improvement that we'll be focusing on over the next couple of months. I know that you've heard about the desire to do an open government policy, so I'm going to be working with the mayor's office and City of Queens office to develop that, which we're really excited about, and feel like that will help to respond to the desire to make sure that local residents are connected to the, all the information they need promoting civic access. So, that means you're making sure that they actually have all the documents, all the different things that the city is working on, as well as community engagement, and making sure that communication is a two-way street, and so, not only are residents receiving information, but they're actually able to be part of the process. And so, again, that is a very draft first section, with many sections of that plan, but more obviously will be contributed. And then, the third section is just a brief, a couple samples of some of the press releases that I've done out, as well as some of the press that we've received. I could definitely do a full documentation of it, but I just thought you could see, basically, what we're working with on that, so.
Hi, Maryann.
Hi, Megan. Hi. Can you direct me to where I would find anything on the tourism that's going to happen? Because with the budget, that money was taken out of the tourism line to be put with the Director of Communications, so the tourism was to be continued. Is that in here anymore?
So, yeah, so, as I said, this is a draft portion of it. Many years ago, Ulster County and the City of Kingston partnered, actually, to work on tourism. And so, first, we have these beautiful visitors guides. I'm very excited about this guide. For those of you who do not know, if you didn't hear during the mayor's press conference, this visitor's guide was made without one penny being charged to the City of Kingston, is completely sponsored by ads. Colorpage is the publisher for it. And every single photo here was not purchased, it was donated by local residents through the Welcome to Our Hometown photo campaign. And so, this is kind of an example of how we're doing collaborative work to still achieve what we need to do. I think that in our discussions, tourism is a very huge undertaking. Right now, Ulster County is basically doing a lot of that work, and we're basically supporting that. We don't have the resources or the capacity right now to have our own tourism office, so I worked a little bit on the actual content of this, like the writing version, but as far as the major tourism ad efforts, I know we talked a little bit about economic development, actually hoping to do some micro projects, but that's really where we are right now with that.
So, because I know that the county maintains the tourism building on the town, and that there was some resolution passed a year ago, and we are sent back in regard to that. I just want to try to clarify, my question is that the money was taken out of the budget for tourism, because we were going to promote and include it in the Director of Communications, and this is a lovely guide, because we spoke about it, you gave it to them and I for our meeting.
Pretty sure, yes.
Right, and you were going to then issue it to all the other that you know it, and I'm just not sure I understand where the tourism money went, and if we're not going to promote any tourism. But I thought that was...
Sure.
I thought that was the part of that resolution that was passed.
Yeah, so tourism is still going to be a part of what my efforts are. And so, I guess what I meant by that is that we no longer have, before there was a tourism consultants...
Correct.
...who focused those efforts on. Instead, my understanding at least is that the administration decided to invest that into running the whole capacity of communication.
Correct.
And so, basically, right now, like I just met with the, or met the Directors of Ulster County Tourism, and so, our goal is to meet and kind of talk about where are there gaps and services. So, that stuff is going to be left behind, we're just going to hopefully be doing more to support communication.
Right, so you'll somewhat...
Yes, again, first draft, I just wanted to bring something to this.
So, I didn't see it briefly looking, so that's why I wanted to ask.
Okay, thanks.
So, you're briefly our advocate, and I know sometimes the City of Kingston gets lost in a gap, and I've seen the Ulster County tourism, it's like two blurbs of Kingston. So, you're going to be sure that we get mentioned, and so, you turned it over to Ulster County? You're kind of like our advocate?
That's a new word for that role, but sure. Yeah, so basically, yes, I definitely hear that, I agree with that. I mean, I think that we need to make sure that the City of Kingston has its own brand and has its own, represents everything that's unique about Kingston, because it is unique and different from the county. And, yes, I will definitely do that.
Okay.
Anyone else, any other questions?
And I think there's a folder, does she have a folder?
Yes, I have her folder.
I'm also just going to send over some business cards. The only other thing I want to say is that I work for the City of Kingston, so I work for all of you, and so, I would love for you to think about how I could support your communications, community engagement. I know that you are basically the first responders to our community in many ways, and so, whether it is helping with social media, I'm very comfortable with that, whether it is going door-to-door to, there should be flyers about a major thing that's happening, like, I'm a person who has a lot of energy, and so, I'm coming to you and saying, like, use me, I work for you, okay?
Let's start right there. I want to give you a couple things, I was going to pass them on anyways, there's a cleanup this week.
Yeah, makes sense.
Because you have a lot of kids at your fingertips, so, here you go, Megan.
We have a team, we need to.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate that, because I do door-to-door, that's the only way to get people in certain areas aware that you need them to participate, which way is this going?
I didn't want to get something in the way.
Other than tourism and, you know, connecting the citizens to the government, the whole process, is there also an avenue for you, like, as far as like economic development, like reaching out to other, like the businesses in other communities to, you know, pick more of, but they know that's a little far more, but are you, is there like a link?
Yeah, so, I'll give you an example, I happen to have been called by somebody who was new to Kingston, they just called a house, and they said, you know, "I really would love to learn more about Kingston." So, I met up with them, we had a quick cup of coffee, and we talked about the fact that they come from a part of the community in New York City, where they have a lot of friends who want to do some investing. And so, you know, I basically, I talked to them about how much I love Kingston, and the different things that I find to be great, unique resources, and I talked about economic development, but at the end of the day, you know, economic development, community development are a backbone for that. So, it's basically a resource referral, so that would feel welcome. Yeah, and so, there actually has been discussion about that, you know, I was speaking to a number of realtors about reinstating local wagon vouchers. You know, I think that a lot of people, I know when I first moved to Kingston, I'll be honest, my first week, I actually had gotten a violation, because I didn't know my garbage can was too big, you know, we just bought one at Target. And, but if I had something that said, you know, "Thank you for buying a home in Kingston, and here are some great resources you should know, this is when your trash is picked up, etcetera." And so, that's something that actually I've talked to some of the realtors about that we're working on.
That's part of our steady income stream. That's sarcasm for the realtor.
If you have any other questions or need anything, please reach out. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Megan, thank you very much. All right, let's get down to the fun stuff. We're going to rearrange the order a little bit here. A couple people are here that have to be elsewhere, so I'm going to kind of move them up in the rotation. We're going to start with Local Law Number Three, the Ethics Amendment, the Ethics.
Actually, did you just start with Brenna?
No, 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 no.
I'm trying to go from the bottom up. And this is Local Law Number Three, we're talking about here, so if you need... That was just in and out, I think that was, that came in. Everyone has that Local Law reading? And again, this would be the first reading. Oh, yours, Mr. Garson.
Well, it's really up to the floor, I mean, I passed out the proposed amendments to start the process of revising the Ethics Law, you've all received them. If there are any questions, we are certainly available to answer them. Most of the changes are pretty self-explanatory. So, are there any questions?
Yeah, this is sort of, this is the beginning, this is probably say a lot of...
I mean, I can certainly walk you through all of the changes that we're proposing. This is probably going to take about four or five months of groups of amendments. You know, we started with the most obvious ones. The proposal is to change the way the Board of Ethics is appointed. Currently, it is appointed strictly by the mayor, and the members can be removed at the pleasure of the mayor. The mayor has requested that we change that, so the council appoints three, and he appoints three, and that there is a specific process for removal, so it's not, you know, just at the mayor's whim. We have changed, I mean, pretty much obvious things, we didn't see any reason why there should be requirements that members of the Ethics Board be 25 years old, because if a 22-year-old wants to be on the board, and, you know, the council or the mayor wants to appoint them and they're qualified, there's no reason why they shouldn't be. We didn't feel that they need to be a registered voter for five years. I mean, certain provisions that are in the law now that just have no...
Resident of Kingston, though.
Well, yeah, obviously, they have to be a resident of Kingston, but they don't have to be a registered voter. We don't really care what party they're in, and, you know, as long as they are of age, you know, they should be able to apply, and, you know, the appointing authority can make a decision as to whether or not, you know, they are the best selection. We've eliminated certain titles from the annual disclosure requirements, because the titles were not, because the individuals do not have the sort of authority that, you know, we need to regulate. You know, deputy department heads don't make decisions that need to be, you know, reviewed, you know, by the Ethics Committee, and don't enter into contracts, so there's no reason for them to be required to submit the financial disclosures. We also tightened up some of the definitions that if you read, you know, under the current language, basically just make no sense at all, so.
Does anyone have any other specific items to add?
Oh, and we eliminated the section that calls for criminal sanctions for violating the Ethics Law when we don't have the authority to prosecute people for criminal offenses anyway, that's the job of the district attorney.
So, you're saying under, under the definitions for domestic partner, or it remains with the exception, we're deleting 1(c) and...
Deleting 1(c) and deleting the paragraph that is currently titled "Family Member."
It was overly broad.
Yeah.
Oh, so that, so "family member" is not a separate section here, that's...
It is a separate section in the current law, where we're looking to delete both domestic partner and family member, the definitions under, mostly because it's included in other sections, and if you look at the definition for domestic partner, I have no idea what that means, and I don't think anybody at this table can tell me what it means.
I mean, I think Dan put it into three broad categories, either we're talking about an overly broad definition, the definition lacked clarity, or there was some element of the code that was unenforceable. I think those were...
Yeah, pretty much.
So, then the only other question I had was the standards of conduct. I'm sorry, I wasn't, like, even...
The standards of conduct, basically, we have eliminated what is referred to as the revolving door provisions, recognizing that the purpose of this legislation is to address conduct of present city officials and present city employees, not people who are no longer working for the city, or people who are no longer members of the Board. Again, those individuals who are now part of the, part of the community after they leave office are not really subject to our regulation anyway.
So, there's not a two-year window, or any window that would, like it...
No, after you leave office, after you leave employment, you know, there is no, you know, restriction according to our code with regard to your contact with city government. That doesn't mean that under other statutes, or, you know, under, you know, applicable provisions of the penal law, you, you know, your conduct can't be regulated. Anyway, the question is whether or not we can regulate someone after they leave office.
Okay, that's how I thought I understood, I just wanted to clarify. Because I did do...
Seems like a good, it's certainly a good start, yeah. Well, thank you for your comment, Reverend.
I have a question, is there anything in this local law that says a member to this commission must be current with their taxes and fees, and also, their property must be in conformity with applicable ordinances?
That'd be good, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, but again, I think that would come, I think Dan addressed it earlier, where that would come under, if there's someone in that category, there, chances are they're not going to be appointed, you know, they're still going to be appointed, if someone comes in.
Well, suppose they're a member and it happens.
There are, yeah.
Wow, already on there.
Yeah.
Well, there are provisions for removal if the appointing authority believes it's a basis.
If the appointing authority believes what?
If the appointing authority believes that they have a basis to remove a member of the Ethics Committee.
But if the law says you must be, that's the basis, that's my point.
No, there's nothing in the current, you know, statute requiring that...
The question is should it be? I raised that question, because it's very applicable at this very moment.
Well, this isn't the final, this isn't the final...
Well, I just mentioned it, no...
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I understand.
If you're around a board where, you know, you're grueling on something, and you're in violation yourself, it's a little, a little hinky.
Well, the focus of the amendments has been to simplify the statute, rather than to include additional requirements that we really, that are problematic at best. And again, as long as any applicant has to be screened by the appointing authority, the appointing authority certainly can take that into consideration. As it stands right now, this is a completely unworkable document, and we are trying to rein it in rather than expand it.
But I'll make note of that, already.
Thank you.
That's a good point, and I'll certainly address it down the road. Anyone else, any other questions for Dan, any?
I have a question.
Any questions?
How is it that this matter came before the Public Safety Committee last week, and why was it an executive session? I don't hear any thing today that would warrant the matters being discussed, that you brought it to executive session.
Well, it wasn't an executive session, the Public Safety Committee was consulting with their attorney, which is an exemption to the open meetings law. It's a completely separate issue, there were legal issues that needed to be discussed between the committee and their lawyer, and that is...
That's not an exemption.
Yes, it is.
No.
And I can provide you with, you know, with cases and...
Trade secrets.
No. What you're doing is you're listing exemptions to the open meetings law. Once the committee is meeting with their attorney, it's no longer an open meeting, okay? And there are cases, not only, there are decisions from the Committee on Open Government that clearly distinguish between consultation with counsel and executive session. The essence of a attorney-client relationship is private conversations, okay? And the committee or members of the council are always within their rights to have a private discussion with their lawyer, and that's what they were doing.
Not during a public meeting?
It's not a public meeting anymore, once the meeting is adjourned for them to meet with counsel. And again, if you want me to give you, provide you with the, you know, with the decisions from the committee, I can certainly do that if you, you know, read me your contact information.
I'd like to take a look at it, because that's the first I've heard of.
And in terms of why it was on the public safety agenda initially, given that Mr. Will was the Chair of Laws and Rules at the time, while there was a complaint pending against him, it could not go to Laws and Rules. So, it was sent to the next logical committee, which is the Public Safety and General Government Meeting, and henceforth, when further amendments are considered, it will go to Laws and Rules where it should have been in the first place.
So, what you're saying is basically, just because you're talking to the caucus now, that could be closed in public, just by merely being a lawyer and talking and advising the council people here?
Depending on what the subject matter is, yes.
Depending on what the subject matter is, and whether or not the council is receiving confidential legal advice.
Would we have to close the meeting? If we'd have to...
But you're discussing an amendment to the Ethics Code.
I think you're making assumptions regarding what was discussed in private at a meeting that are not accurate.
Well, I can only make assumptions if you do it in secret, right?
All right, well, that's a, I mean, that's a good conversation you and Dan to have, and I mean, I don't think it pertains to me at this point here, going forward for today, so, you know, I might want to get to show, show where you got that information. Okay, anything else on this Local Law Three? Everyone's good?
So, that's the end.
We will go to Resolution 123, Brenna?
Bill?
Yeah, so...
So, it's not on the, it's on the new one?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the one that's in town.
Got it.
So, Resolution 123, we'll jump to that, that's the block grant.
Not the up there, no, no?
What's that?
I'm really just here to answer questions, just really found the local school committee.
Yeah, if you want, yeah, just in case. Maryann?
Well, it's her, Brenna, she's actually there.
Yeah, she's here to answer questions.
So, I just thought maybe you should share with us, cancel the couple of changes that were made at last week's meeting, so, in regard to Maritime Museum, the boys club, there were, I felt it was about $15,000 that we shifted at that meeting.
No, I think it was just 10 and 10.
It was 10 and 10.
So, 10, 10 from one to the next. I mean, there were some changes the mayor made prior to that meeting.
But just art.
From his...
Art was 10 and 10.
His, we just shifted that.
I just thought Brenna should share that, because it was his...
That's okay. So, just to back up real quick, the CDBG process started with applications, went to the advisory board, the advisory board made recommendations to the mayor and the common council, Community Development Committee. The Community Development Committee then made their own recommendations last week based on input from the board and the mayor's recommendations. And, Maryann, you're talking about the $10,000 that was changed from the Maritime Museum to the Boys and Girls Safety and Security Project?
Right.
So, the mayor was in support of the Huttenberg Maritime Museum project, and the Community Development Committee just felt that, that, because I'm assuming, I actually wasn't there, I was sick, so, I apologize, I'm assuming that based on your original recommendations, it was because you were not supporting the YWCA Safety and Security Project, you didn't think it was appropriate to do so for the Boys and Girls Club project?
No, that was the mayor's. We went to the office about it.
Yeah, we put it back.
You wanted, I'm sorry.
We put it back.
You're right.
The YW, we didn't support.
Right.
But the YN, Boys and Girls Club, we did.
And so, the mayor's recommendation was to switch them, and you discussed switching at that.
And that's where it stands, right?
Yes. That's, yes, you, so the Community Development Committee voted last week to award, so from the mayor's recommendations, the only changes were that $10,000 change.
So, if anybody that wasn't there was following, they would understand.
Yeah, a lot of that had to do, well, I won't say a lot, but something had to do with the fact that the museum has, there are other opportunities for raising funds and generating funds.
Brenna sent us an email today about what, about the, about the information of the Maritime Museum.
I did answer the questions that you came up with at the meeting, did you all see that?
I just got it before I came in.
So, do you want to, you want to go through that real quick? You had three questions that were relayed to me from Mandy, Amanda. And they were, in prior years, the board's recommendations were published before going to council, and, so, there's a 30-day public comment period required before we submit our annual action plan. In prior years, there was sufficient time to do that before the full common council vote, we got a little backed up this year. So, we are still meeting our HUD requirements, I would ask that you all vote tomorrow according to the input that you've received so far, including the information in the public informational meetings, the public hearings, the advisory councils' information, the Community Development Committee's information, and the mayor's recommendations as well. Please move forward with your vote, we will have a 30-day public comment period. If, as in prior years, I don't receive any additional comments, because we have gotten so much public input already, I will be prepared to submit our annual action plan the day after that 30-day comment period. If there are comments that come in, I will share them with you, or you may receive them directly, please share them with everyone, and if one member decides that they feel that they should have another meeting to address those comments, we can certainly do that in sufficient time to get the action plan submitted. Okay?
Great.
The second question was about the Trolley Museum's allocation last year, that is moving forward, that we will not be reallocating that amount, they will be purchasing track maintenance equipment, rather than the storage container, because the container project triggered a Phase 1 environmental review, that initially I was informed the Trolley Museum could afford, and that has turned out not to be the case. So, rather than, you know, do a project that they can't complete, we're going to revise that contract. The last question was, where does the city stand with the money, the CDBG funds that were allocated to build a better Broadway project? So, that $42,500 from 2014 is a match for about six state and federal grants, it's part of the match, or six federal grants, and state federal grants. And so, that money needs to be available at the time construction starts, and construction will start in the next three to five, three to six months, so there isn't sufficient time to do it in the 2016 or 2017 allocations. So there isn't sufficient time to do it in the 2016 or 2017 allocations. And I also, when we were being reviewed by our HUD representative in September, I asked the same question that you did, and she said, no, keep it there. It's already in an approved action plan. And just, you know, move forward with the project as, as it's rolling forward. Were there any other questions that you thought of in the interim?
Do we still have the consultant we had in previous years?
Okay, so who was our consultant? We have, we need more clarification.
We don't have one at the moment.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
You're our consultant.
Now, I'm not.
So, seriously, though, we, the advisory board, the office, the council, we've all learned a lot in the last few years. So we're not, you know, we did hire the consultant when Jen, yeah. So when Jen Fuentes was here, and she had first come on board, there was a consultant to handle the transition. I'm not saying that we don't need a consultant on other issues, but we do have a really great rapport with our HUD representative, and there are loads of resources online as well.
Was that money taken out of CDBG grant for the consultant, or was it part of our budget?
Yeah, no, it was Community Development.
And I'd like to, I mentioned this at the Community Development meeting in regards to Brenna. One of the things that impressed me is that this year, and Nina, thank you as well for educating the public on this whole process, in the past, there were so many applications that just didn't qualify, or they threw out before even reading because they didn't qualify. And this year, every applicant was eligible, so it was, it's a, there was one?
The connect that wasn't eligible.
It was, it was eligible.
Oh, I don't know how that was explained though.
It was, it was only a one-day thing. I think we all assumed that it was...
A program.
A program, right.
One day?
Right.
That's tedious, thank you, because that's not how it was.
But I think that's, that's a credit to Brenna, the education for the public, because I think that helped, it helped the process, and it made it more difficult, because everyone was eligible, so it was, there were harder cuts involved.
Right.
But I think that's a, that's a good direction going forward with this. Thank you.
She did a great job.
You all did. So like I said, you know, the advisory board and the council has gotten more educated in our community. It was a little easier. A little easier.
Okay, any other questions for Brenna?
Can I make one?
No, just questions.
I spoke to Brenna today, I think. I spoke to her at some point, and I, we talked about changes that were made, and I, there was one specific change that was made. The elderly program was taken away. And I told her I wished that we could have actually given them something, because I thought it was a great concept. And what Brenna's response was, that they're accepting applications for 2017, and that she would work closely with them to make sure that they understood what the requirements were, to give them a better chance, which, and I said that because there's very little, Deb expressed a great concern also. There's very little programs for elderly people, and I just happened to see a commercial before, and to this meeting about how elderly people were in a commercial, they were working out, they were doing some kind of workout, and they said, if you don't use it, you lose it. And I thought this program tied into that. So I thought it was nice that she's offering, she's extended herself a lot to explain, try to help educate people how to be successful in getting some of this funding. So I thought that her job was really, really good to overextend yourself and explain things.
That reminds me of a question I was going to ask Amanda that night. But is there any going forward, anything in the CDBG grants that could help people do a business plan that's something that would benefit the community?
So, there is. It is an eligible activity, but it comes out of our admin line. So there are lots of planning things that we can do, lots of business assistance, you know, strategic planning for businesses that we can do, but that comes out of our admin line. So if we don't have the admin line from CDBG to pay for the office running, then it has to come.
Because I know that would be very helpful to somebody's organizations who have a great idea, but they just don't quite know how to put it on paper.
So, so here's the thing, we, I know how to write a business plan. And I would love to do that for people all the time. But that's, that's something that already exists at the Mid-Hudson Small Business Development Center. So what I, what I recommend to people who call me all the time and say, I want to open a business, I want to move to Kingston, I want to do this, I say, do you have a business plan? How recent is it? Does it need updating? And if not, or even if so, go to the Small Business Development Center, have them get you set up with a business plan. There's a template that I send them to do a little homework ahead of time, and then they refine it at the Small Business Development Center. And then I'm happy to look at it again, but it would take all of my time.
Okay. I just want to tell you something, you know those individuals need it, can say, hey, this is for organizations?
I haven't spent any contact, am I having yet?
They have an excellent idea.
It was on my list of things for them to do before they come back, and so I just tell them to call me, and I'm happy to point them in the right direction, and we can refine the business plan and the application for next year.
I would like to just see more senior activities next year.
And that was my next comment, too. CDBG is meant for senior programs and projects.
And we haven't had any.
Yeah, so get the word out.
It's an amazing concept.
We had the, the RAC department, though, there, I knew Pat Johnson works with the seniors on a daily basis. There's the pottery class. Well, there's more than pottery. I'm saying something new, something new. I mean, at least, I mean, I thought a spring program too, and wish that we could have a lot of those things here, too. But we do have a small stepping stone, I mean, to move to a bigger step.
All right, Steve, I just want to make one comment. I really thought it was great that the committee spent a lot of time, you know, I really wasn't familiar with the process, you know, I was on the other end asking for funds for the RAC department in the past, so it was, it was very informative. And I think they spent a lot of well-deserved time asking questions about, okay, you're putting in for $5,000 to do this project, but it's really not enough to keep you floating. So how are you, what are you, how are you going to fund this next year? Are you going to be back asking for money? But this is not in perpetuity. It's not to, you know, to float your business for the next, you know, 20 years.
You have to be able to show it away. How are you going to do this moving forward?
So I think you kind of set a tone with some of the questions that we were asking, and I thought that was, that was really helpful. I don't know if that's part of the application process, that they really, probably the business plan.
Well, the business plan is something sort of specific to a program like that, but in the public informational meetings, we do talk about not asking for the sky, but also not asking for a little bit, and then not being able to complete your project. So the applicants are, are informed of that. I, well, I think it's in the application, but if not, then we can reconsider.
But I think some of the people probably think, oh, I'm doing the right thing, only asking for $2,000, but, you know, what does that get you? It's just kind of not even keeping your head above water, you know, treading water for a little while. You know, so it is, I thought it was great, good process.
All right, so anyone have any questions? Is everyone good on this, on the grant? I think, I think they did a great job of what involved, so.
I did my best.
Appreciate it.
I need to just, I sent you a...
I was there, yeah.
You want to stop a second?
Yes.
You're good, thank you. All right, we're going to go up the ladder again, because Dan has agreed to stick around, because he just handed us something on the Pilgrim Pipeline. Steve, I came out of your committee, the memorializing resolution to support the state's bill. If you want to talk about it, if there's any questions for Dan briefly, but it's sort of, we've already kind of begun this, the process, voting against, you know, showing this merger with the pipeline, that happens to actually link into an actual state bill like the state. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty simple, legislation very, very direct that it would prohibit the transporting hazardous substances, like petroleum, under the jurisdiction of the New York Thruway authority. And we just, we want to recommend that this be banned. Very simple.
Are there any questions? Again, this isn't new, but if there are none, Dan can go ahead and enter. If there's any questions for Dan or Steve or anyone out of the committee, tell me.
Dan, did you get this new communication or something about these two pipelines? Did you get that communication?
In the, changing the language, two pipelines.
Yeah. One, two, I mean, you want to change it to two, fine. I was just here because our office received this communication from Pilgrim today, indicating that they just wanted, you know, the information passed along, that they had written in the paper, and they monitor press coverage, that you were considering this resolution. You know, they indicated that they have reached out in the past and not gotten the opportunity to speak to, you know, the board. They also wanted to alert, you know, the council to the fact that the Thruway Authority, I mean, that the joint lead agency's termination was made, I believe it was today. I included a copy of that in your packet, and the rest of the documents are pretty much self-explanatory. I haven't, I can't say that I've gone through them at length and digested them all. There's also a copy of a response that they had forwarded to the Albany Common Council. The Albany Common Council was supposed to vote on a similar resolution this evening, and after receiving the communication from Pilgrim, apparently they took it off the agenda for, you know, for them to further communicate with Pilgrim to get what Pilgrim indicates is the other side of the story.
Okay. And this does indicate, it says pipelines in both the committee report and the resolution, so it doesn't say just one, it does say destruction of pipelines, pluriately. Yes, Lynn?
So there was some need to get this through the committee rather quickly, to get it in time, get it in front of the legislature before they went away for break, which was in June. So to me, you could look at this communication and say, oh, well, there's nothing wrong with inviting them, we shouldn't invite them, let's slow down a little bit. But I think the problem with slowing down is our memorializing resolution would not get to the legislature, the state legislature, in time for it to have any kind of impact.
So we had a session before our next comment.
And just for clarification, they weren't specifically asking that you do anything, they just wanted this information passed along, and that's what we've done. They're more concerned with as the secret process moves forward, that, you know, our role as an involved agency includes, you know, communication with, you know, both sides of a contested issue, rather than just hearing from one side.
And there was one other issue, as I recall, Sogardis, the town council, they are tempted to meet with them, arrange for meetings, and they didn't show up on two occasions.
And no further communication with those meetings, they did not show up.
So those would, that would be an important context to interpret and understand the letter.
Okay, is everyone good on that? Any other comments or questions, problems, or good on number 122? All right, Dan, thank you very much.
Toodles.
Your toodles. Ready, I think? Anybody have a cell phone in case?
What's that?
Start, start at the beginning now, back to the top, number 111. 111 and 112 are the sale of properties, the amount of finance. Do you want to skip around more?
Yeah.
Yeah, where do you want to skip to?
We've been here a million times.
Yeah, we could, we could go.
I just think it's all fair now.
Okay, sure. I will do that. We'll go to Resolution 120. Now, for those who were at the Laws and Rules, Lynn, you did a fantastic job with 45 or so speakers for your first meeting that you were chairing. I thought it was quite impressive, so. It gets easier after this, Tony, than you're...
We're going to discuss this resolution.
Even one of your students is...
Well, you remember Q's going, oh, you don't have to say that.
Yeah, I can't say a word.
I just wanted to say that there was much discussion, which I think began with you, Bill, about other reenactments, et cetera, that took place in the city. So I had sent to Dan and to Kevin, and amended to Benjamin, and it just added on an excerpt in, or in acceptance ceremonial purposes, to include, but not limited to reenactments, parade commencements, bedrooms, funerals, race surge, and/or Memorial and Vexer Day celebrations. So that was a concern here. So I had sent that on.
And honestly, I don't even know if that, because I don't know if that, they're technically considered firearms, or there was some debate on that, if they are. Okay.
Somebody called arrows considered a firearm.
Yeah, the idea is just to keep it, keep it clean and have it, have it typed up. But as far as where we are now, I think, I personally think we should refer back to committee and address that and get, yes, Lynn?
I just, my understanding is that the reenactors are not, the guns they use are considered antiques and don't qualify as weapons.
Well, they should, they put gunpowder in them. The gunpowder goes in it, because you can see the black smoke coming out.
But no bullets.
Well.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know the definition of firearms.
But it's still a firearm.
To be honest.
But I agree, Bill, this is a discussion that I could...
Yeah, I think, I think if we, I think if we can clean this up and then answer a lot of questions, I think there's, I think we have a better chance of making this happen if we have, if it goes back to the committee.
Don't worry.
I don't understand, we're asking out to bring in a fat to committee. We brought this up in the committee, and put it to a vote. The vote was very clear, not to amend. Why can't, why do we have to bring that back?
Because, because as it stands now, a military funeral, ceremonial salute, like a memorial day coming up, could not, could not do it. And if you want to tell the veterans that they can't shoot off guns to do at a military funeral, you be the one to tell them, because they were very upset when they learned that, because that is a firearm that they use.
Is that true?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
I have a question.
So as of now, they cannot shoot the...
They do.
What was the matter with that question?
This is, by going back, you have an opportunity to really discuss it at length, and it's not prejudicing, prejudicing anyone.
Nina and Mary Ann? I mean, you can, you can vote no to send it back.
I want to know is, now, these, these enactments have been done for years. So like, are these technicalities because, this is kind of getting comical, it's getting kind of comical.
Nobody read the law.
Well, yeah, it wasn't enforced.
But for years, the law's been like that.
It wasn't enforced.
I mean, it's been like this for years, so how technical would it get?
If you're going to enforce one.
Well, it just exposed it, we, nobody thought anything of it. This just opened up, you know, some other ideas, and honestly, a lot of it was from the public comment. Some of the things I didn't think of, a lot of people were talking about, and it's just something that nobody thought about.
To say that, to say that, to insinuate that someone wants veterans to not be able to do what they've been doing for years, that's very strong. I don't think anybody here would ever want to see the veterans not be able to do what they've been doing.
But that's why we need clarification.
But if it's, that's the law that's on the books, whether you...
But it's been on the book.
Right, but now, now that's the...
Nobody's enforcing it.
I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying for one second that veterans should not be able to do the reenactment. I think this, this is technicalities being brought up as a result of the ambiguity of the current laws.
Mary Ann was next, and then Lynn.
I guess that's how you can look at it.
So, it's your shot.
Go ahead.
While you were out, I read the amendment that I sent to you, to them, because I didn't get a response on that, and I don't think it was shared with anybody. So I just read what I had sent, that I would include with sending it back to the committee. So that's where the discussion of all this is coming up as well.
I was just going to make a technical point, because I, I think Nina's point is right on, that no one wants to deny veterans the right, like, my father, for example, was a veteran, had a military funeral, and there were gunshots fired, so no one has any interest in doing that.
Oh, definitely.
But, but it's like the First Amendment. I mean, the First Amendment says, you know, you can't regulate free speech, and yet we do all the time. So the question is, are there interpretive exceptions that have...
So the question is, are there interpretive exceptions that have been allowed to go on? Or has this just been total neglect? And I think that's your point.
You say it way better.
Well, whatever the problem's been in the past, this is a great opportunity to bring clarification to light.
Right, it's been exposed.
And what you didn't have previously was the opportunity to hear various interpretations, various ideas about what come into play as a result of the law, the way it stands. This is an opportunity. You guys can hash out and, you know, cater and craft the law the way you feel it should be done.
But you need to bring it back to committee to do that. You can't do that on the council board. Because as of the results of you bringing up the funerals and the parades, I received many calls from veterans and they're, they're worried, they're concerned. That's why I sent the amendment to amend the amendment. And they're not even, you know, there's been reaction that they don't even want to have a memorial day or a veteran's day ceremony. And that's based on that they're doing something illegal, they don't feel they should be.
Right, and, yeah, I mean.
And I had many phone calls on that.
I understand that, but I think even if.
But that results in.
I mean, America even issued executive order to let straighten this out, allow a few rules. I mean, I don't, I don't think, Doug and then Joe, you can speak.
Yeah, Nina, I think this is getting, I don't know if comical is the word, but certainly a little bit out of hand. We wouldn't even be discussing whether the veterans could shoot on Memorial Day and any, whatever they do if it wasn't for this particular issue. I just.
Well, yeah, because it explicitly exposed that.
Well, I had to beg to differ with that statement only because in laws and rules in January, we were given the charter and the codes to go over to reevaluate those and update them from the chair of laws and rules at that time. So it may have touched on that. It's just that it got brought to light sooner than later.
Go ahead, Joe.
I was at the committee meeting, which was turned into some sort of public hearing because so many people spoke. And it was calculated that it was an equal amount of people that spoke. But I'm going to elaborate on one particular person who was educated. And she said that you shouldn't be hasty to amend this law. Jennifer Schwartzberg, being a student of law, as she said, it's obvious that this law was created in haste. There's no provisions for special events, veterans, there's no provisions for even education of firearms. I mean arbitrarily, no firearms. I mean, that sounds like it was done in haste without thinking. And she recommended that you don't move in haste. And I think it's good that you send this back to committee. And I think you should provide provisions in the law for education, special events, and whatever other deemed fit necessary to be in the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve? Yeah, I think, I mean, I agree with that. I think the law, what was it, 78 or whatever?
78.
It was done for a specific purpose without a lot of thought. It was a kind of knee-jerk reaction and it was passed and they didn't put it on, it doesn't look like they put a lot of thought. It's pretty ambiguous, there's a lot of, a lot of holes in it. So, you know, I don't think we want to make the same mistake. I think we want to make sure this is done correctly.
I agree that it should be sent back to committee, Bill. I agree.
Well, I just think we have like six communications that just came in this week to talk about it, you know, and there's a lot of different opinions in there.
Also, did everyone get a fact? We were asked if we would include all the letters in, to the council.
Plus we turned in sixty-some letters to win at.
Well, so I think, I think we have.
What I was saying.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, you can discuss it and maybe you don't want to pass the provision that amended the recommendation, but maybe you want to say, okay, we'll allow, we'll allow it in specific areas, you know what I mean? You know, there's a lot of leeway when you're looking at this law, there's a lot of different things to do. So, my opinion.
Nina?
What position is that put, Dr. Sawyer? That's my concern. And also, we're taking this back, obviously there's going to be more time. And I had the opportunity to speak to him on the way coming up to Syracuse and I spoke to him before the last meeting as well. He's put a lot of time, a lot of money. He's been very meticulous in his thinking. So I asked him a question, I'm going to be honest, I asked him, was there, is it true that you're looking into possibly doing this in a different location? Because I don't think it was a steadfast, we don't want this here. I think that there were a lot of different opinions. But one of the main concerns that I heard was it's, it's a good business proposition, but can you do it in a different location? In Kingston. So by us taking this back, what position does it put? Dr. Sawyer and all the other people, like there's a businessman here, but also said he would love to participate in that, in that gun range. Like can he do it in a location that's different? Can it be done in a different location because it's very small? So he could accommodate everyone and there were a lot of mothers that spoke. We all heard the different stories. There were a lot of people that were for guns that said, this isn't right. There was, there was a lot of feeling in that moment. And just being thoughtful about how much time has Dr. Sawyer put into this, time and money? And how many other people have put time and money and effort into this? What position is that put there in?
Well, well, it sounds to me like you're, you're asking if we delay it, that jeopardize them, but you're also bringing up a lot of points that may be more prudent to bring it back to committee though, from what I'm hearing.
Well, I'll make a motion on this, we're going to have to committee tomorrow night.
I mean, I think we have an obligation as representatives of the public to vet this thoroughly and systematically. And yes, it came in to zoning, but now we're talking about amending a local law and it's before us now. And I think those public comments, whether you're for or against, raise a lot of issues that when people get involved and people have an opportunity to participate in the process, it makes better law. And so to me, I know there are business imperatives and I understand that. But we're, we have obligations to serve the public.
Well, at the meeting, I also asked his council if another month would really jeopardize anything. He didn't seem to think so, I mean, if I answer that, if another month.
Well, it's been a year, right? It's a year, the elderly, you have two weeks ago. I can just address this something? So, you know, there was a lot of, just a lot of talk at the last meeting, the last committee and people were very concerned with a lot of things. I hired a consultant who did all the, all the research, all the demographics on the entire area, the DAB radius where people were driving here. You know, the, the numbers are really about 200 a week, actually up, maybe up to 240. 60% of your traffic is going to be on the weekend, on Saturday, Sunday, and the rest of it, 40% during the week. People are saying 20 people at a time there. It's, it's five lanes because that's the reason, the reason it was five lanes is because that's all that the county's going to support, you know, for now. So the, you know, a lot of people just, there was a lot of conjecture, I think, and people just, you know, thought about things and said, well, you know, we need a much bigger place because we have so many people coming. But, you know, it's my business, I actually did all the research on it, I got the consultants that run ranges throughout the country and, you know, they looked at all the, all the numbers. And that's, that's what it supports right here. You know, can you do something on a bigger scale? Sure. You can do something with enormous investors. This is a monetary base. It's enormous to do even a small project. So to do it, to do it on a much larger scale, one, not entirely sure the business model will work here, but, you know, may under the right circumstances, but you need very large investors to do that. So, you know, with that said, I, you know, I think a lot of people just kind of shoot from the hip and they, you know, the main comment is in that, I mean, there's no valid basis for a lot of things. You know, I guess if they spoke to my consultant, maybe they would think differently, maybe they wouldn't. But I think, you know, based on a lot of the information we're getting, I'd say it's wrong, you know, and what people are saying. So, and, you know, just, I just wanted to add those couple of points is that, you know, there are professionals and consultants that have looked at all this already and, you know, a lot of the things are being said are still correct.
Thank you. Steve, actually, I think what you just said kind of adds to, adds to the point. Now, I don't think I'm.